And welcome to the March 4th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. In accordance with the governor's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This public meeting of the Falmouth zoning board of appeals is physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures in place. The meeting is being televised via Falmouth Community Television. And real time public comment can be addressed to the zoning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software. For remote access and for the Zoom login instructions. They are available at www.falmouthma.gov/zba. I'll introduce the board at this time and everyone's who's here also to comply with the open meeting law, meeting virtually. My name is TJ Horry. I'm the chair of the board. Ken Foreman is the vice chair. Bob Dugan is the board's clerk. Ed Van Kuren is a full voting member. Scott Zalinski is a full voting member as well. Mary Berry is an associate member. James Morris is an associate member. We have Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator. And Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary and Justin Shanahan is helping us out from. The Falmouth IT department and we have our friends at FCTV. Who are helping us broadcast live as well. So thank you all for your efforts. So tonight's agenda. Is a little different. We do, I guess, we do have public comment at 6:30 and we have the board discussion. So just in order to comply with open meeting again, if anyone out there has anything to discuss. A member of the public with something that is not on the agenda tonight, go ahead and click the raised hand icon. And we can elevate you and get you in a minute. All right, not seeing anyone. Moving on to our board discussion with the town manager and building commissioner to discuss items that are on our agenda list. So with us tonight is Julian Susso, who is the town manager and Rod Palmer, who is the building commissioner. And thank you both for meeting with us tonight to discuss these items. So we, we, we did circulate these, these issues to discuss tonight. So is just going to ask everyone if we take them one by one, if, if I introduce them and maybe make some introductory remarks. Then we can have some discussion about each one. Everyone just, is that a good idea?
That's fine.
All right, fantastic. All right. So up first, we have the acceptable second means of egress for accessory apartments. And accessory living space. So it's been a trend for the last couple of years, I'd say that projects are being proposed with living spaces. Above garages, particularly detached garages. With, maybe it has interior access, maybe it doesn't. But an issue of proper egress has come up in a lot of these projects. I know recently we've been provided the CMRs by Rod Palmer, which spells out some, there's some discretion. As to what's acceptable for a secondary egress or not. I think the, the issue that the board's been having is typically in the past. Normally secondary egress has usually been. An exterior exit. Whether it be by a stairwell or some sort of wooden steps leading out from above that garage or secondary building. Down to the first floor. So I think the issue that the board has that this sort of project, it can be exploited. And also long as there is interior access. An applicant can propose to basically two exits. And they could be in close proximity to one another. And again, the CMRs, I suppose they do say they're discretionary and Rod, I guess you can further elaborate on that. But I think the board's main concern is that it could be opening the floodgates in terms of applications and. What could ultimately be decided as proper means of egress. Rod, we, we have you on, well, it doesn't show you as muted, but we can't hear you right now.
Why?
We have you.
Got me? All right. So I, I'm not exactly sure if there's a specific question. There's so many variables to. Single family homes and accessory structures and accessory dwelling bylaws. There's so many variables. So if there's, I'm not sure if there's a specific example that you would like me to comment on with respect to two means of egress. Or if you just want to have a general discussion on what typically requires two and what may only require one.
So typically, if I just try to fix it, so typically I guess what we're seeing right now, and I think this has. To do with the trend that we now have an accessory apartment bylaw. And it appears that the applicants may be trying to. Put in what appears to be an accessory apartment, but get under another definition. So in most of our cases, it's a sleeping area. So in most cases, it's some kind of a bedroom. Over the detached garage with an additional living space, a kitchenette, a bath. What trends to happen is that to get around the health department. They remove one of the bedrooms in the main house. Easy enough by doing some kind of a case opening so they can transfer that bedroom unit into the accessory structure. But when it comes to the building department. It seems like they don't want to consider second means of egress as sleeping area. They want to consider it just as living space. So I think that one thing's happening is they're trying to look for your department for one definition. Health department for another and kind of slipping in between, but we're seeing these. Pretty much on a weekly basis now, and in most cases. Again, the accessory structure, it is detached, it's not attached to the main house. But they typically have multiple rooms, a bath. Some kind of a kitchenette without a stove. And definitely some kind of a sleeping area.
If I can add one thing, sometimes these. May not actually be able to qualify as accessory apartments because they're too large relative to the main structure or something like that. So you know, it's another workaround. Basically create a, an apartment without meeting the zoning criteria.
So it sounds like what we're talking about possibly is. What we see quite often in Falmouth and we've seen for many, many years and there's a lot of. A lot of homes utilize accessory buildings, ancillary structures for the overflow of families. During the summer months, they might have. Family gatherings where they need to have an area for, for family members. So in situations like that, when they utilize a garage or some sort of an accessory building. And it's utilized for that reason. It, it always, if there's, if there's sleeping quarters in that structure, there will always, there shall always be two means of egress. And I emphasize sleeping. Because it becomes at that point, something, it becomes a dwelling unit, not a single family dwelling, but a dwelling unit. And when somebody sleeps in a structure, it requires two means of egress. And. Now there, there are other types of accessory structures that have. Have been converted into other things that are not for sleeping purposes. Could be a workshop, could be a study, could be an office, could be many different. Uses and for those types of uses, you do not need to have one means of egress. One, two means of egress, one means of egress is adequate. And we see that quite often, people will have a two car, two car garage upstairs, they may have. An art studio or. A workshop, something in that fashion. For those types of uses, only one means of egress is required. Two means of egress shall always be required if that particular accessory structure has an area where people are sleeping. Whether it be. A. Accessory structure that's deed restricted so that it is nothing more than that overflow for family members. Or if it is a legitimate accessory dwelling under our accessory dwelling bylaw. There shall always be two in the, in those situations.
So it would seem like a simple matter. If the board of health. Declares that it's a bedroom. Then it seems like your office should declare that they need to eat two means of egress. There should be alignment between those two things.
So I agree with you and, and that is a little troubling for the building department. The board of health and the applicant. And the reason being is that we regulate 780 CMR. And for me, I recognize that space as you label it. If you label it as a bedroom. I will review the application as a bedroom. If you label that room as an office, not for sleeping purposes. I will review the application as just that. The board of health, they look at it differently. They regulate 105 CMR. And they have a different set of regulations. Here in Massachusetts. And if it appears to be a bedroom, if it has a window and it is at least 70 square feet and it has a door. They're going to view it as a bedroom. And so it's unfortunate that we have conflicting CMRs, but that's the way it is here in Massachusetts. So sometimes it's challenging for the applicant.
Scott?
Yes, sir. Mr. Palmer, thank you guys for coming. I have a question that piggybacks that. With regards to safety. Whether they're up there in, in a, an art studio or an office or whatever, and there's vehicles underneath them. We've heard some argument in the past that then we didn't need a second means of egress on the outside of the building because it's. Somewhat like our homes. That we only have one egress from upstairs to get downstairs. Very few of us keep our, our cars in our living room. So. My question has always been if, if that building becomes engaged, whether whatever's happening upstairs. How do they, how do they get out of the, the second floor if there's only one means, whether it's a sleeping area or if not, out of a garage? And I'm, and it's just a question.
Yeah, no, I understand. So we typically, in, in most of these situations. There, there's a, not always, but in most situations, people that have a detached garage that have something upstairs. Typically have a stairway that is from the garage area. And typically on that second floor, there's an emergency escape window, something like that. But you know. I guess, you know, I, I guess that in situations like that, it's, you know, again, it's not my. It's not my responsibility. I don't have. The ability to tell somebody that on that second floor, they need two means of egress. It's not a single family dwelling. And therefore they don't need it. The building code states that a single family dwelling must have one means of egress. It does not state that an accessory structure. Needs to have two means of egress. It's single family dwellings only, and that garage is not a single family dwelling. So it's. It's just not regulated. It's not required.
So the sleeping area.
By means of being a special permit that, that also that still takes it out of our purview if we have safety concerns. It's not in our purview?
Well, I mean, I would yield to Frank Duffy on that, but I would venture to say that it is not under your purview.
Okay, thank you.
I might also add that in most states. Only one means of egress is required from a single family home. Here in Massachusetts and a handful of other states. They have amendments to the international building code. So here in Massachusetts, we recognize. The international building code and the international building code says that every single family home must have at least one means of egress. Here in Massachusetts, we amended that. And here we need to have two. And it's only again, single family dwellings. It says nothing about accessory. Says nothing about accessory dwellings, accessory structures.
Bob, you had a follow up question there?
Well, I guess the sleeping area is the key. So, so this is my question. So if, if they go to the health department. And they revise their plans. To remove a bedroom in the main house and switch that use to the accessory structure. Which means they would be labeling that accessory structure. Wouldn't they have to use that same set of plans that shows that? Change of labeling use when they apply to the building department?
So typically in situations such as that, there's usually two building permits involved. There's the building permit. For the work proposed or the change of use in that accessory structure. And there's also a building permit. Required for. The principal building. And the purpose of that building permit within the principal building. Is for the removal of a bedroom or the conversion of a bedroom into a different use. Such as an office or. What have you?
And I have a quick question.
Yes.
I have a quick question about. About all of this, which is. Since it's a labeling type of an issue here that you're, you're speaking of. So they label it as an office, but the next thing you know, it morphs into somebody living in that space. Whether it's by the person who applied and initially used it as an office. Or somebody came along and purchased it and on the, on the. The listing, the realty listing, it said it could be. Whatever, you know, living space with a second unit. What happens in that case?
Well, we can't control that. And, and so for that reason. We require a building permit. For that principal structure. So we have documentation. That that bedroom is no longer a sleeping room. But it's not for sleeping purposes. It is an office. It is. You know, another type of use. So we have documentation, but we can't control. What is listed on the MLS. For that home. That's not something we can control. If somebody buys the home and they. Take that case to opening and put a door in and, and use it as a bedroom. It's not something that I can control.
Well, what about the case where a person? Applies under to you and calls it something other than a living space, other than a bedroom. And then uses it, as you say, the uses and always was. Determined to be, to actually be used as renting it out or whatever. Because what you end up doing is you end up with a case once I know that I can label it as an office. And use it as living space and rent it out and get means of income. Why shouldn't I do that? And then everybody seems to know that that's what happens and then they start to just label it.
I'm not so sure I understand your question. I, I understand your comment, but I'm not sure. How I can answer that other than when somebody applies for a building permit. And they convert the use of a room. We expect that that will remain in perpetuity, the use of that room until such time. That they apply for another permit for using it for something different. And that's the whole purpose of a, of a building permit. You know, if you label it. For a particular use, that's how I recognize it. And that's what I expect. That's what we would expect it to be used for.
Absolutely. And that's a wonderful expectation, but the reality is something often different. And what I'm suggesting is. If there's no enforcement or no way to, to determine the use. Then what's the difference? Why would we even go through it and just allow everything to go through?
Well, the only way to enforce it would be to police it.
I, I don't know. If somebody applies and, and I'm just hypothetically speaking. If somebody applies for a building permit and they say what the use is. And they put that in writing, then it seems to me that's a false statement if they're using it differently. And somehow that should be enforced.
Well. You know, if there's an application. And the application states a particular room has a particular use. That's what we expect. That's a legal document. That is what we require. So that we. Know what the use is. If they take it upon themselves to change that use without proper documentation slash building permit. It's. It's impossible for us to even know, let alone police.
Well, I guess all I'm saying is, is I have seen cases where we get a plan. And it will have on it labeled bedrooms. And the next plan we see will have the bedrooms out. And they'll have switched things around so that sometimes it's a dining room instead of a bedroom. Sometimes. We've seen an awful lot of different labeling. And it seems like it would be somewhat suspicious.
Okay.
Because what they're doing is relabeling in order to get what they want. It, it maybe it's because they don't have to put in a title five.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I'm saying if you're not going to enforce and there's no mechanism for enforcement. People will just do what they want to get what they want.
Okay.
Rod, if, if, if we deed restrict as part of the, a condition as part of a special permit. Does that deed restriction, like in a case of a bedroom or, you know, no more than so many bedrooms? Does that actually show up in your system on your permits when they apply? You know, for their occupancy or when they apply for the application, does it show that there is a deed restriction on the property so that? The plans that are actually being produced for you will match whatever the deed restriction is?
So the only time that we. Generally see. Permits that have deed restrictions attached to them. Great.
Hey Shannon. Hey Shannon. Hey Shannon, you helping? I just lost it.
Rod, we have you.
Injuries of Zoom.
Right? That's all right. I think he's out of the room. When he comes back, we'll.
You know. Though if that's all right on this, on this topic.
Sure. Why don't you go ahead, Scott?
Mr. Susso, thanks for coming. Just a quick question. In the event that something like that takes place.
Sorry, Scott. Rod, we, we have you. I don't know what happened there, but we, we do have you.
Okay, hang on one second. Having a little computer problem. Hang on here for a sec.
No worries. We, we've had you completely fine this whole time. So I don't know if, I don't know what's happening on your end.
We're losing it down here. We're having a little computer problem. Thanks, honey. All right, buddy. Sorry about that.
No worries.
The big guns, the experts.
I know. I apologize. I apologize.
No, it's, it's happened to everyone, Rod. Don't worry. Scott was just asking Julian a question.
Just real quick. In, in the event that we approve something and, and it's misused. And something catastrophic happens in that sleeping area.
Yep.
We can't be held responsible for that as the town can. And I know you're not a lawyer, but I mean. If, if, if it's, if it's permitted one way and it's approved by us one way. But it's used a different way. Does that relieve us from any? Liability if somebody burns up in one of those places?
I would go out on a limb and say, yes, it has, we bear no responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Makes sense to me. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I just, I still say that there ought to be alignment. I realize that the state codes are different. Apparently between board of health and. You know, what Rod has to deal with, but. If we're getting a designation as a bedroom from board of health. When we issue the special permit, I think we have latitude to say. You need to means egress. The building commissioner may not acquire it under the, his criteria, but it's a special permit. We don't have to grant it.
It's true. And Rod, part of the issue that we are seeing, especially with these. You know, the bonus living spaces that aren't necessarily labeled bedrooms. We're seeing every amenity under the sun. But they're calling it, they're not calling it an accessory apartment. They're not calling it. A bedroom.
Okay.
Full size sink, a full fridge, things like that. And I, I don't think Falmouth really has anything on the books in terms of limiting that sort of thing. Cause when I see a project like that with like a full bath, full sink, full sized fridge proposed. And I'm having second thoughts about it. I'm, I'm starting to think about restricting. The so-called amenities that are in these spaces. To ensure that they're not. An actual living space. There's no, you know, no beds there. You know, typically in the past, the board has conditioned things to a certain extent. And we've really treated deed restrictions as, as a last resort. Knowing how, how much of a burden that is on, on the property itself.
Well, I think, I think you get the complication too, a little bit, or maybe it gives us a little more teeth. So special permits are recorded with the registry. They run with the properties. They're there forever. So. If you have something that's recorded at the registry. That affects the property rights on that specific, you know, address or location. I don't, you know, I know how they apply sometimes to you and they can change stuff around, but. If, if a permit is given by the building department, let's say they changed up on your plan. But that's in violation of an actual recorded document in land court or the registry. I think it gets in a very iffy situation with town and I understand what you say that. You know, in all likelihood and hopefully, you know, if there was a fire, there's a use issue, but if there was ever a use issue on a fire. The first thing someone's going to do is say, we have a recorded document that was given by a board. That permitted this, this way. And then after this board did that and it was recorded. They got a permit for something that was different. And in those cases, and again, you'd have to ask the town council. I think you could make a very good case. That the original permit protected things. And then there was some kind of a disconnect in the actual permit, which even allowed an occupancy that could be different. Does place a liability on the town. And I think it is a very tough situation. There has to be some kind of consistency. Between building health and even in zoning, if it's a special permit. That all the plans match. And there are no changes, you know, we, we frequently get. Applications that come in. That we've actually given permits on and they come back in the future for a modification. And when they come back for the modification. We find out that there were changes that were made to the actual plan. That did go properly through the building department, but they never came back to the board to modify, you know, modify any of the conditions. So then we get into the situation where you now have a property that wants to be modified. And it now has a cloud on the title because what is in the property currently. You know, is against what the permit calls for. And the other situation that you'll, you'll get at some point or that I worry about is that. You know, we all know, once these changes are in somewhere for 10 years. And something's done differently and now it's non-conforming, it's now legally non-conforming. And in the last. I mean, I've only been on the board for, I don't know, two, two and a half years now. You know, I could give dozens. You know, I could give dozens and dozens of examples of stuff that you just go by in passing and not realize and think, wait a second. That doesn't look like what I remember we did. Or I'll go and review an old file and find out. You know, sheds weren't removed. So now the lot coverage has changed. Or you can you can see that you look at transfers and that, yeah, the three-bedroom is now a five. You know, in most cases, because they don't come back to us all the time. You would see that, but unless you saw what the deed restriction was and what our actual permit was. And that that matched what the building department puts out. It just gives a big inconsistency. And, you know, I know we have, and I know helps an issue whenever, but, you know, on Unicity. It should be easy enough to even code something on Unicity so that when an address comes in for a permit. And you type in the address in the office. There should be some section there that just says, look, these are the restrictions. These are what's allowed. Does this match what the applicant is applying for now? And then if it doesn't. Then you refer them back and say, you need to modify, try to modify the permit or ask for the changes. We're just, we're seeing these so frequently now. And, you know, it's it's just expanded. It's expanded huge. And we we always get, you know, different explanations from the applicant. Or they'll immediately say they didn't know what the permit said, or maybe it's a new owner. And then there was a, there was a building permit for something else, and we'll go with it. But there needs to be some kind of process that just gives some kind of clarity so that everyone's working on the same plan. If there is a change that comes in, you know, maybe it's not a severe change the whole board has to see. But the office should at least be notified that, look, just be aware they're applying for this change. Does this affect what was permitted? You know, maybe the ZBA could even look up at that, but the administration can say, look, it does affect what's permitted. We're we're seeing the same thing on a lot of uses. Certain property have certain restrictions on how something can be used and can't be used. And over the years, those have all changed. You may have something that had a parking lot. It had to be used during some kind of a business work hours. And then suddenly you see the parking lot is used as a paid parking lot. Or there was restrictions that you couldn't stay there overnight. Now you're seeing people stay overnight. I've been on the other end down where I've had to put a complaint as an abutter before. It's very difficult in a lot of cases to fill out a formal complaint as an abutter. If you get along with your neighbor and you've tried to talk to them in advance and you know that they're not going to do it. I've I've tried in the past years ago to go down and say, look, could someone just give a call over, maybe feel them out? You know, in most cases, these abutters don't want, you know, big fine issues. They just want the people to know that they have to comply with something. There's no anonymous system anymore. I mean, somebody could actually hand you full sets of documentation. And maybe that's maybe that's a legal thing, but that's a big issue, too. You've got you've got a huge elderly population in the town. They do not want to worry about having any, you know, retribution if somebody doesn't like what they're commenting on next door. So that process somehow also has to make it easier for somebody to say, look. I am completely aware what's going on. I have documentation what's going on. Here's the documentation. Can you just look into it and see if it's an issue? Because they don't, they don't want to have, I had it with me. I I had something, I'll tell you, I I went to the town. I was finally told I had to formally fill out a complaint. And I hadn't been out the steps of the town hall when my cell phone number was given out to the other party. And they were already calling me screaming on the phone, why didn't I go down to town hall? I wouldn't do it again. It's not worth it. It's not worth it. But if we can stop these inconsistencies on the properties with the permits and that stuff is being used the way it's going to. You don't get into that situation. And it's it's very, very tough. You know, most people think that if there's a violation and you have, you know, the information to back it, that the town would just say, okay, there's a violation, send out a letter. And, you know, be aware, we've got documentation. Show us that you're not using it this way. But there has to be a way to get consistency on plans and process. So that eventually you don't have to worry about, you know, trying to go back after the facts and fix things. Because right now, I honestly would say you would need to review a lot of the permits since I've been on the board. For the stuff that those aren't complying with. It's just, it's it's frustrating because you assume that when you give them the rules and regulations, put it down, that's what's going to be done. You know, later tonight, there's a comment about sheds. Sheds are very common. It's very common for us to pull sheds out. Because we have to keep lot coverage in these areas that have very small lots.
Bob, I know you're bringing up a lot of great points here, but I I do want to stay on point here.
Yeah.
You know, taking everything item by item.
Go ahead.
Sure. Bob, I'm sorry, Rod, I don't know if you wanted to respond.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make.
I do want to stay on topic.
Okay, I wanted to just clarify a couple of things, just two, two simple things that Bob had mentioned. One was after 10 years, that particular shed or zoning violation would become legally non-conforming. Under a special permit, if there's something, a shed is a good example, Bob. If the special permit requires the removal of a shed and for whatever reason, the shed removal was missed. There's there's no statute of limitations. That shed, because its removal was required under a special permit, there will never be protection for that shed, even after 10 years. The other thing I just wanted to comment on is the the complaint process. We receive on a daily basis complaints over the phone about neighbors. And if there's if there's a violation and it's not in plain open view within a public way. For me to knock on somebody's door is a violation of their constitutional right to privacy. And it's not something that that I want to engage in. For me to knock on somebody's door or to ask to go in their backyard to look at a particular violation that a neighbor might have complained about, unless it's in writing. I would be very uncomfortable about going to their door. As the zoning enforcement officer and a building official, if I see a violation in plain open view from a public way and I and I notice it, I I think that I am obligated to act. But if I cannot see it, and it's something that's within the confines of that house or in the backyard, there has to be a written complaint. There has to be. Thank you.
So in my case, just you, just really quick, it it was the opposite. It was the open view for years, literally, where you had to drive to the town hall. But I was told that if I, even though they could see it. If I didn't physically come in, sign the form and give all my information. And they did tell me, they said, look, once you do it, we have to supply it to the other party. I but it's those cases. It's it's the case where it's an open site. I understand you can't enter property. And I know what the privacy laws is. The health department has the same problem. But a lot of the issues that we have are stuff that you could see from plain sight, from the streetscape or the public area. And in those kind of situations, it would be easier to say, you know, go by and if you see it, handle it without, you know, having somebody fill out the you know, fill out the forms and cause, you know, issues with, you know, their neighbors directly.
Well, here's a suggestion. Why can't somebody make a complaint and their name and and address be kept anonymous? I I've worked with a lot of complaint systems in my career, and we always had ways to do that. It might be something to consider.
I think with the Freedom of Information Act, I don't know that we can.
Oh, but you can with complaints. I mean, you're talking in some cases where if somebody had a special permit and they, in fact, told you that it wasn't going to be lived in year round, and it is. That's a, that to me is is they committed a misstatement, a false statement on a piece of legally responsible paperwork. And I mean, I don't see, I think you can definitely allow them to to not have to give their names. Or give their names, but you can't, you don't give it to the person who it's, the complaint is on.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, Scott. We we do want to stick on.
Mr. Palmer, don't you, wouldn't you agree that the the public and the the abutters and complainants also have constitutional rights that need to be followed up as well?
Um, I do, but, you know, I I believe that if there's a, if there's a complaint and this complaint is not in writing. That I could be accused of singling that person out. If I'm there with a document in my hand slash complaint form. I can let that person know that I'm there following up on a complaint. I'm here doing an investigation on a particular complaint. For me to go to a property and knock on somebody's door and question that person about a possible violation. I could be accused of singling that person out without having something in writing, some sort of a complaint form. So.
Conditions on a special permit and findings and conditions, isn't that in and of itself a list of potential violations? May not be being followed?
Can you give me an example? I'm not sure I understand.
I I'd rather not give you a specific example because I don't want to name names or depict properties. But in the past, on every special permit we have. We we identify and vote individual individually, conditions for the permit. In some cases, you can drive by and see that it's not being done without going in someone's home. Some of these properties aren't even closed in yet. And I'm just wondering, is that a personal, is that a personal preference of yours or is that a legal?
So if there's.
Of the building enforcement officer.
So if there's a open permit, whether it be a special permit or a building permit, if there's an open permit. Then I have the right to go to that property at any time. But if the permit is closed and there's a suspicion that they may have veered from their special permit, conditions of their special permit. And I cannot see that violation or whatever that change might be in plain open view from a public way. I would be very uncomfortable in stopping at their house and knocking on their door.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Well, that goes, well, it goes later on. I I really want to stay on schedule here. But that hits on points that we can bring up later. Ken, did you have something on?
I was just going to say, we we, the fourth item on the agenda here is to address enforcement. And maybe we should just take this up in more depth then. Maybe at that time I would like to say something.
My apologies.
No worries, no worries. I know we just got talking about something and then it leads to something else, but that's fine. All right. Anything else on the, basically the accessory apartments or the living spaces above garages? James?
I guess my question, either Mr. Palmer or Noreen. If it's an acceptable board function, we have someone who's come before us requesting a special permit. We're looking at the plans. They're labeling it a hobby room, a storage space, a den, an office, anything but a bedroom or what could be an accessory apartment. And in reviewing the plans, they have a shower, a three-quarter bath, a Long Island coming out. And although there's no stove or refrigerator listed clearly after a certificate of occupancy is issued, they could wheel that in the next day. Is it an acceptable board discretionary function to say, we don't like the plans, we're concerned this is going to become living space? Permitted or otherwise, or could be a bedroom in the eyes of the Board of Health and simply say, no, we're rejecting the plan. We're concerned this is going to become something other than what you're stating it's going to be. As it's a special permit. I I guess what I'm saying to the board is, should we just be saying no a little more often than we are?
Perhaps we should.
In my view, if if the Board of Health considers it a bedroom, it's a bedroom. And if, and so what I have learned from this, from Rod, is as far as he's concerned, bedrooms, even though under the zone, under the building requirements, maybe it's not considered a bedroom. But he would normally say any bedroom that is, you know, qualifies under the building rules would require two means of egress. And so it just seems like a simple thing. We say, well, we're going to require that for anything that the Board of Health says is a is a bedroom.
Well, I I would just add one thing on this discussion about bedrooms, and maybe it should be discussed at a different point in the agenda. But I have seen in a file where there was an email that said how you could take five bedrooms and make it into two. And I can't make that up. And this somehow relates to privacy and four-foot openness.
Right. But we're never going to control all of that. But, you know, what we can control, I think, is you know, is we have something where the Board of Health says, this is a, we're counting it as a bedroom. That's good enough for me. I think that meets our our criteria. And we just say from, you know, there's a safety issue. I think we can consider that in the special permit process. It'd be nice if the building department would, you know, agree and back us up.
Yes, I, if I, if I may, when we receive these plans. We we accept them as they're labeled, as they're drawn. We don't presuppose that they will become something else.
But can't you get a a referral or check with the Board of Health?
So if if most of our permits, most of our building permits that we receive are reviewed by the Board of Health. And more off, more often than you might imagine, the Board of Health will recognize a room that is labeled an office as a bedroom. I, as the building official, I don't have that. I don't have that ability. For me, as a building official, it's black and white. If they label it an office, it's an office. If the Board of Health comes in to do their plan review on the same property, after I've stamped it for approval on my end. They, and they've done this in the past many, many times, reviewed an office and said, that's not an office. I'm I'm reviewing, I'm I'm viewing it as a bedroom. And they contact the applicant and they have a conversation with them and they work it out one way or another.
But I guess when it comes to us, then we, I I believe we would have the latitude under the special. I mean, maybe Noreen can give me what what she thinks, but I think we've got the latitude under the special permit process to to put in the requirement for two means of egress.
Does it ever happen that it comes, it there's an appeal and it comes before us and we set the standard for it? And it goes back before you, Rod, and it's changed after that? And then there's a permit issued?
So and that happens quite often. That's a good question. If if a special permit is granted for an addition or some sort of an alteration or improvement. And along the way, they decide to remove a window, add a window, move the door to the left five feet, whatever the case might be. They have to fill out a revision form. And that revision form will will show that change. And if that special permit, if that if that revision is applicable to a project with a special permit. Then we do our best to make sure that it it has an amendment to the special permit.
Does that come back before us or not? Is that something that?
I typically send them upstairs to to Noreen. And Noreen will typically make a decision as to whether or not it can be administratively approved or it needs to be backed for the ZBA for an amendment.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Anything else for egresses and the bonus living space accessory apartment? All right, moving on. We have the reconstruction or the substantial additions in a flood zone. So I think everyone here is well aware of the recently enacted FEMA requirements. And we call them recent. I think it started with Hurricane Sandy. But that's lifting the heights of the homes in the flood zones. But that's lifting the heights of the homes in the flood zones, depending on what zone they're actually in. And then, of course, the FEMA worksheet, the 50% rule. If anything over 50%, that would require them essentially going up. So the most extreme examples, of course, are the homes in the low lying areas going over 35 feet, which is.
Does Julian understand this rule?
The FEMA requirement? Sure. So you know, it applies to the low lying areas in town. Old Silver, New Silver, the Heights, despite its name, Falmouth Heights, Maravista, Surf Drive, and those are traditionally parts of town that have cottages. They're old, either a single or one and a half story cottages. They're typically built on either crawl spaces or slab construction that cannot support a second floor without a proper foundation. So especially within the last year or so, the ZBA has been seeing these applications. It triggers the the FEMA 50% rule that they have to go up. They have to secure the building. And typically, the ZBA, we we acknowledge as a board that we typically do not get involved with design requirements. But with this FEMA rule, we see that we actually are kind of through the back door getting involved with it. And what I mean by that is it's the difference between an applicant coming before us for a second floor addition versus a complete raise and reconstruct of the project, especially with these homes that are on either slab or, you know, concrete block foundations. Applicants are becoming more novel with their approaches with securing the structure. And that's either with shoring up what's existing or, you know, reinforcing it. It especially comes into play when you have, you know, especially in those parts of town where the lots are small, you're up against that either 20 or 25% lot coverage, and then you have the side yard setbacks as well. So let's say if if you do have, you're going that reinforcement route, you might be creating a new nonconformity on the side yard setbacks with whatever concrete structure that's being built to support the house. And also the ZBA, especially when a second floor is being proposed, we're requesting these letters from the build team actually certifying to the fact that they could, the structure can actually support the second floor itself. So again, we we've been coming into those design requirement issues with these sorts of projects. Rod, I know I know that we've sent a couple of referrals your way. It might be earlier on in the process than you're usually seeing a project. But we're we're trying to raise those issues that we we are seeing these these problems with those sorts of projects.
So I'm not sure. Is there is that a question? I'm not sure I understand.
Oh, it's it was just an intro introductory remark with with that general sort of with that topic.
I I think sometimes we don't know. And in these situations, you know, the of course, the applicant says, yeah, no, the foundation's fine. Right? And we don't know if that's legit. So we 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 certainly would value an assessment
Okay.
from the building department on what on what, whether that's true or not.
Okay, so for for single family homes that are one story homes that are typically older homes, and as you had mentioned, a lot of them were cottages built in the 40s, 50s, 60s, and maybe 70s. And a lot of these are built on symmetrical masonry units or cinder blocks, a lot of people refer to them as. And they have no footings. They just sit on sand. So for these older homes that we have no record of or no building permit record of, we always, always require those foundations to be analyzed by a structural engineer. And that structural engineer will typically go out, dig an observation hole, maybe one, maybe many more, and observe the soil conditions, observe the foundation that's in place and make a determination based on the presumptive load values of the soil, the existing foundation, and what their proposed second story is. And they will articulate in a letter whether or not that existing foundation can support a second story. In some cases, they cannot. In some cases, they can. In some cases, they may, if they're augmented in a particular way. But that's something that we have always required and will continue to require.
Right. And and we do try to get that letter before us during the special permit process. Something else is, especially with that with that 50% rule. And we 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 look at the the worksheet. And for some of them, they are right up against that percentage and with the cost of materials going up, especially in today's economy. Like, I I challenge anyone to build the house like they like they said they would at at that cost. If if you're real, if you're really look into it line item by line item, they're they're over the 50%. So I I don't know what you do in that sort of circumstance.
So that's a challenge. And that's not just a challenge for Falmouth, TJ. That's a challenge nationwide. These homes that are being improved upon, the FEMA regulation is that they not exceed 49.99%. Once they get to 50%, then it becomes a substantial improvement. And the difference between nonsubstantial and substantial is one penny. It's one penny. So most folks will try to stay under that 50%. Now, here in Falmouth, we have a FEMA worksheet that I created a few years ago. And the purpose of that was to have somewhat more of a justification as to what the expense actually is. In most cities and towns, the 50% is recognized on the building permit application where it has estimated value of work. It's just a number written on there. So here in Falmouth, we have gone above and beyond in creating this FEMA worksheet that has a line by line item for materials, for labor. And it's a document that's signed by the homeowner. It's a document that's signed by the contractor. It also must have attached to it a copy of the building contract signed by the homeowner and the contractor. So we we do as much as we possibly can. But for me to analyze line by line on the FEMA worksheets and challenge every expense online, every single line would be, it would be impossible for us to do it. We issue thousands of permits every year for properties in the flood hazard area. It would be, it would be impossible. So we assume that all of these applications that come in are true and accurate.
Good. So so what about in the circumstance where, and I'm sorry, I don't have a building background, so I can't quite describe what they're doing. But the when they're shoring up the structures, the more novel approaches. When you're actually decreasing the side yard setbacks with with some of these projects, do you do you look at that? And and you acknowledge it as a increasing a nonconformity on the side yard setbacks or or anything like that?
I'm not sure I understand. So if there's a, are you are you asking me, what do we do if they exceed the the setback? I'm not sure I understand you, TJ.
So in some in some of the cases, they're trying to fortify the original concrete block foundation. So they may be putting in steel rods or they may be pouring a secondary foundation. And the secondary foundation, because it's on the exterior, is now it's it's now decreasing the setback. So they're actually, the actual new foundation is going to make it more more nonconforming because you're now closer to, again, the sidelines.
Yeah.
Sub subsurface if they're buttressing a foundation and it's underground, does that count as?
No. And and and, you know, that's a good point because most of these modifications or shoring of foundations are usually subsurface. They're done with, quite often, foundations that are settling. They they are reinforced with engineering piles or they call them helical piles, where they're like corkscrews that they screw into the earth. And all of the mechanical attachments and such are below grade. And you would never know they're there. So I don't know that I've seen off the top of my head a plan come in for a foundation reinforcement where the foundation becomes thicker and actually encroaches a setback further. If if that were shown on a plan and that foundation was already nonconforming in its distance to the property line, I would send them for special permit. But that's usually not the case. Most, in most cases today, when there's reinforcement needed for a foundation, it's always subsurface by new new unique engineering.
Thank you for the clarification there. Anything else from the board on this topic?
If if they're building, putting an accessory structure on one of these flood zone areas or or just in areas in general, is there a minimum distance that that structure has to be from a main home? Like, can you can you put it a foot away, or three feet away, or four feet away? Is there actually something that says that you have to stay so far outside for passable area or?
No, we don't typically see accessory structures very close to homes, but no, there isn't. If a garage built closer than five feet to a single family home, then that garage has to have a fire rated wall on the wall that faces the single family home. It cannot have windows in it. And if it has a door, it has to be a fire rated door. And that entire wall that butts or faces the single family home again has to be fire rated if it's less than four, five feet. To the best of my knowledge, there are, there are no laws that prevent somebody from building a garage two feet away.
Thank you.
Anything else from anyone on this topic with the flood zones? All right, moving right along. We have the enforcement of the ZBA decision conditions. So what's been happening with increased frequency, I guess you can say, in the after an applicant gets a special permit? It's it seems like they've been, we've been seeing violations of conditions on special permits. And and that can range from anything from the plans that are presented to us, aren't exactly what's presented to the building commissioner's department or or what have you, or maybe even after the fact, after after a CO's issued. So I guess my question is, what's what's the process of of your review? When an applicant comes before the ZBA, now they have their special permit. And then then they go for their building permit with you. You know, if I could just hear your your review process from those, from our special permit, especially our conditions.
Okay, so typically what happens is if an applicant has acquired a special permit for whatever be the case, certainly that applicant would include on their building permit, they would check off that there was a that there was zoning, applicable zoning. We would ask that the applicant attach a copy of that special permit in its entirety to the application so that we may read it. We typically, when there's a special permit or some other type of relief attached to a building permit, we typically send a copy of the building, we send the building permit application and the plan that is submitted to us with a copy of the site plan attached upstairs to the ZBA. Now, this may not be 100%. We do our best, but there may be one or two that slip through the cracks with the volume that we have today. But the process is that they go upstairs. Noreen will then verify that the plans that I have are reflective of what the zoning board of appeals has. Once the plan and the application come back downstairs after Noreen has verified that they are the exact plan or close enough, then we move it along the process to all the other departments that need to review it as well. Once the application is approved by all boards and departments, whichever are applicable, we typically wrap up the building permit application. We stamp one set of plans as reviewed and accepted by the building department. We attach a site plan if there's a site plan applicable. We also take the page or pages from the special permit with the conditions and staple it to that set of plans that goes back to the applicant along with the building permit application. So when the building permit is issued with the plans, on that set of plans is the special permit, a copy of the conditions. And those that are, in my opinion, extremely important for them, I highlight them. So that's typically how it's done. Is that something that we're required to do? No, it's not. But we try to make sure that the applicant is cognizant of the conditions.
So when the when the permit goes in, do you rely on the applicant to say there's a special permit on the property?
Well, we expect the applicant to include all documentation that's applicable to the permit. If the applicant had to go to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit, it's their responsibility to include all documentation.
So again, just for process, so let's say the applicant didn't, let's say by chance, they didn't include the documentation, they just applied for the permit. When you enter that address on that property into your system, do you see anything on the screen that that shows the property is under a special permit?
So so.
Because I I understand you expect the applicant to do it, but you know, we all know things happen and sometimes an applicant may not fill out a form right or something's missed.
Well, so so in situations like that, Bob, where applicants have filed for building permits and they have not included anything relative to the special permit, when it gets reviewed, it is typically denied because there's a zoning violation, whether it be a setback or whatever might be the case. And we will contact the person, let them know that there's a zoning problem. And what happens more often than you might think is, oh, we had a special permit for this. And I would ask them to please bring the special permit down so that I might have it. And so it's sometimes recognized that way. But on our, we have a building checklist in our building permit application. And on that checklist, there is a line item that states if there is a special permit or zoning relief, it must be attached to the building permit application. So people know going in, or at least they should know, that it needs to be part of the application. Very rarely is a building permit issued that requires a special permit where it hasn't surfaced at some point. Very rarely.
Chairman, may I?
Go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Palmer, have there ever been any instances of a case coming before us and then being appealed? That permits were issued during an appeal period? What happens in that case? Has that ever happened?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, my my other question is, when someone comes in and maybe they are confused, maybe they're looking for a loophole. What what is the, and I hate to use the word punitive, but in the event you find out that someone maybe held something back and did something, what's the next step? What do we do? What do you do? What do we do? What is it?
I'm not sure exactly what you mean. But if somebody applies for a building permit, typically within the building permit application, there's a set of building plans, there's a a site plan stamped by a land surveyor, if it's an increase in in the footprint. If somebody applies for a building permit. If somebody applies for a building permit and something is purposely left out that would have caused me to deny the permit, and then that matter is recognized, more than likely, there would be a cease and desist on the building permit. But but I I don't know, you know, exactly, you know, exactly what we're talking about. But that's typically what would happen. It's the responsibility of the applicant to be truthful in their application. And 99% of the time, they are, in my in my opinion.
It's been your experience that in the events that they're less than truthful with you. There are, it's my opinion that if 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 there is a line that the building department chooses not to cross out of comfortability or 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 legal process or whatever. If you know that and we know that, the applicant knows that. And and how do we keep them from exploiting that?
So so my Scott, my inspectors, when they do an inspection on a property, whether it be a new home in addition, whatever it might be, they will not do the inspection unless there is a set of plans on site. And when they go to do their inspection, the first thing they do is they find the plans. And they do their very best to ensure that the work being done is compliant, reflective of the plans. Now, they're human beings. So if there's a wall or a petition in a home and it's off two inches, well, they don't measure every petition. They do the best they can. They walk through properties. They observe the best they can. So I I think here in Falmouth, you know, we do the best we can. We have good inspectors. They're thorough. They're seasoned, experienced inspectors, and they do the best they can to make sure that whatever is being constructed is being constructed according to the plan.
I understand. And I I don't want to put words in Noreen's mouth, but I couldn't. Noreen, how many complaints do we get for violations from abutters and townspeople and all of that? With complaints about the fact that when they do put in a complaint or they're they're asked for video evidence, they're asked for, I don't think it's their responsibility, if they have concerns, to put the onus on them. Do they have pictures? Do they have timestamp? Do they have night vision? When when we're talking about something as simple as maybe start times or days of the week, something that's blatant. I'm not talking about interior walls and or anything like that. And I keep going back to the fact that we provide a list of conditions that identify those succinctly. And we vote those individually for that very reason. So there is no, they're not ambiguous, that there's no room for interpretation. And many times, the complaints that come through the office are stating that it's harder to make a complaint because they're asking for information that they're not able to give them other than their word for it. And I I don't know how we get past that. It's frustrating to go through the time and labor of of voting all of these and discussing them and then see, sometimes people just throw their arms up. I mean, I know you're busy and everyone is. But we take it very seriously when we do that to give you guys the best opportunity to enforce those so it's clear to the public. And and I guess that's where some of our frustration comes in. And I know you're understaffed and we got a lot of permits out there. But I just felt like you needed to know how much time we put in to giving you that guideline for what we require. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Ask a question of Rod.
Sure, go ahead, Ken.
Is my understanding, and I could be wrong, because I'm, I don't do this for a living, you know, I'm, but is that you can go on municity and any any special permit's going to show up?
I don't know that every single special permit of ours will show up. I don't know that they're all in municity. I don't think they are.
Maureen, you're you're muted.
Sorry. Everything that the zoning board does is in municity.
Okay, so it seems to me, I mean, I I think there's a fundamental flaw in just taking the applicant's word for for it, that they've included all the information. Because clearly, if they're trying to evade in some way, you know, you, the building permit is the one thing that has real teeth. And, you know, if you don't give them a building permit, the work isn't going to get done. So we rely on you, and you're also the zoning enforcement officer for the town, to make sure that that these special permit conditions are implemented. And and I think therefore, it's critical that for every single one of these projects, you at least check municity and make sure that we've got it covered. You know, there have been cases in the last year, couple of years that where that wasn't done and where projects went forward that shouldn't have. So I, you know, I I don't think that's a onerous thing to ask that, you know, your department just checks routinely on this municity software. And and the other point I want to make is, is, you know, you could argue that, oh, it's a case here and a case there. 99% of the time, everyone's doing doing things right. But it undermines the whole process if there's no enforcement. And, you know, abutters, it's it's not fair to the abutters. I mean, I'm all about protecting the abutters. You know, they've they've invested in their property. They have a, and the reason zoning exists is to ensure that, you know, we don't exceed density and, you know, people have proper setbacks. And that's all just protecting the rights of the abutters. So I feel like we need to make sure that people, that the people doing these projects, the builders, the developers, the owners of properties, respect the zoning process. And and that really requires help from the building department. You're the you're where the buck stops in a way.
I understand. I understand that.
Right. And and to Ken's point, you know, conditions are really negotiated between the board and the applicant, you know, obviously with a lot of input from a butter sometimes. And when there's the lack of enforcement, the lack of an applicant following the conditions. And, you know, Noreen and Ashley got the phone calls from members of the public. It really erodes trust in the public hearing process. And it erodes trust in the board and in Town Hall as a whole, really. You know, people think that the fix is in and everyone's corrupt. And, you know, whatever the case might be. But, you know, to Ashley and Noreen's credit, they they get those phone calls all the time. And people come to our public hearings and they chime in during the public comment period. And they they just think something's amiss and something's seriously wrong, when in fact it isn't. So.
But, you know, it also.
It really does hurt us as a board when the conditions aren't enforced.
PJ, one other point that I wanted to make is that that this, you know, we we do recognize that you don't have the manpower in the building department or as the zoning enforcement person to go around and check and make sure a year or two after, you know, these permits have been passed and the construction projects done, that they didn't go out and buy a 48 inch door and put in, you know, cases that case opening and may, you know, now it's a bedroom. We we realize that. And but I do believe the whole thing is complaint driven. And if someone notices all of a sudden, there's twice as many cars in someone's driveway and, you know, and they're, you know, that they might, and they come to to either Noreen or you and complain, I think we should follow up. I think that's what zoning enforcement should do. It's complaint driven. So I it's fair to ask them to put it in writing, but it might also not be necessary to share with the, you know, with with the the person who's the complaint is against to share the identity of that complainant unless it advances to litigation. At that point, yeah, sure. But, you know, how else do we enforce?
Well, I guess I would ask the question, how many written complaints did you receive last year? And out of those was how many enforcement actions were where something took place? Meaning, somebody was told to take out things? Where somebody was told that what they constructed had to be taken down because it didn't meet? I think those are the kinds of things. If in fact you are taking enforcement actions, you publicize those. And even if you just have two of them in that point, you know, 99.1% that are doing it right, which I I hate to tell you, I don't believe that that's true. But you take one case and you publicize it so people realize that you're enforcing things. That's how you get your bang for your buck.
We receive many complaints relative to zoning from uses to structures. And whenever we receive a complaint, we follow it through. And there's due process. And in some cases, it takes six months, sometimes more than a year, to resolve these simple matters that seem like they're so easy to resolve. But they're not because we have our due process. So we work diligently with every complaint that we get and try to follow it through to the end. And quite often, it ends up in litigation. We have several in litigation now. We had one before a Superior Court judge today. So we do our best to move forward with complaints. We don't cast them away. We do our best to get them resolved. So for those that we receive, we take them very seriously and try to resolve them. But not every complaint is satisfactory to the complainant. Sometimes the complaint is a complaint that warrants no action. And so nonetheless, we we follow up, we investigate, and we sometimes take no action and sometimes we do.
But earlier, earlier you were saying.
There's always one unhappy party.
Right, no, I I get that. But earlier you were saying that you didn't necessarily follow up on all the complaints. That's that's what triggered my.
No, yeah, that then that I apologize. I I apologize. I I misunderstood you. With every written complaint that we receive, we follow up on. Now, that's not to say that I don't act upon other complaints. We take complaints relative to pools very seriously because it's a safety concern. So if I receive an anonymous complaint over a pool without a permit that is a safety issue, I respond to it, even if it's in your backyard, because it's a safety issue. And the last thing I want is a fatality in a pool. So those, I go out on a limb and I investigate even without a written complaint.
But there've, I've seen some egregious ones. I mean, there's one in particular, I won't mention the specifics of it, but they exceeded the lot coverage. It was obvious from the street, you know, that, and nothing was done. I mean, and finally, the abutter moved out.
You know, that, I I don't know the particular case. But with a neighbor complaining about another neighbor about lot coverage without documentation, without somebody analyzing the percentage of the lot coverage, how do I act? I can't, I can't ask, I can't ask the homeowner to hire a surveyor at an expense that could exceed $5,000 when when I have no documentation to prove that they're in violation. How do I, how do I enforce it?
I mean, I think it depends on the degree, right? If if if, yeah, if it's, you know, if they're at 26% and they're not allowed to go over 25%, you've got a problem. But if they're double that, and you can walk by and say, hey, you know, you've you've got hardscape over, you know, three quarters of your lot. You know, I think it's a different issue. So I mean, it's a matter of degree to some to some extent.
In in situations where those properties have a special permit, I think you have an easy out. The the special permit that was given has a recorded plan. If you are outside the property and look at the recorded plan and you see that there's a ton of stuff that's there that isn't on the recorded plan, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know they're going to be over in law coverage. All the plans have to be recorded. I I'm really concerned at the disconnect with municity because I really think that's a huge double check. Every one of our permits is in municity. I've checked with Ashley. I checked when Suri was here. You know, I've checked with Noreen. And I know, again, with the town, you know, Mr. Suso, I know we have health issues, but there should be somebody assigned when these special permits come in to compare the conditions on the permit in municity with what's being applied. Our conditions in most cases are a single page. It gets a lot more concerning when we're dealing with something like a comprehensive permit. Now, those conditions are long. But many of our permits nowadays, many of our conditions have specifically to do that you can't release a building permit until these items are met. You can't release an occupancy unless these items are met. And, you know, Rod, we're seeing cases where, you know, from some kind of disconnect at some point, they have gotten the building permits before the items were done. They have gotten the occupancy permits before the items were done. You know, with with Noreen, and I know you can't catch anything, but, you know, I've reviewed stuff with Noreen in the office. And it it seems very commonplace that they don't get copies of the plans to review. And when she finally gets the plans at the end of the process and looks at them, they're different. So if you if you've got a system in place, if you have municity, you have one person check that makes sure that the conditions are matching the permit. If they see that a permit is subject, these items are before building permit or before occupancy, you make a checklist. If those check, if you don't check off the checklist, just like you do an inspection on a property, you know, you don't reach all the checks, you don't give the permit. On a comprehensive permit situation, we're the only governing board. We have to stand in for everybody. And that's why the process is so long. That isn't a condition that can just be overridden to say, we're giving the permit and they haven't met the conditions. You know, you go through specific items from the state. We go through these hearings with the butters on a on a comprehensive permit that can go six, nine months. And then, you know, like Scott mentioned, there will be calls in to the zoning office. I want to know why such and such is being done. And when we check into it, it shouldn't have been done. So if we can find where the disconnect is coming and fix those parts of the process, it will make things just a lot easier in general. And I just think municity is easy. I know it's extra work. I know it takes time. You could color code it. You could put it on the front of a file. You could you could do a checklist. It's, in the last year, we've seen a lot of plans come from modifications. And the plans of for modifications have had changes that didn't match the original permit on the property. They did get the building permit. They did get the building modification, but that never came back to the board. And all of our decisions say that if there is any change whatsoever, they have to be referred back to the board. You can't just do a change. I mean, in some cases, just like a stairway or a change of a layout, the way our 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 conditions are written, it says, if you do that, that's fine. You have to contact the board. That has to be adjusted in the special permit. If not, you're giving out permits that are in violation to start with. And then if those aren't caught, and now you've got property transfers down the road, you do come up to a legality issue. And I and I will say, I do think the town has a liability issue on some of these things.
It makes them, it makes them appealable.
Well, it not only makes them appealable. If I if I purchase the property and I find out that this whole process could have been fixed, but there were all these errors, I'm going to go up to the town for my money to change it back. Or what are my losses? And my losses weren't based on this, they were based on. And my losses weren't based on this, they were based on things were done and they weren't supposed to do, and then they weren't, they weren't enforced. And it's very hard for us as a board, we still haven't gotten the answer. The problem with us enforcing or asking for enforcement is we're also the only one that can hear appeals. So hopefully, we'll eventually get an answer to that. But even the administrator could say to the zoning enforcement, you know, we have an agent now, look, this is a property, we know that these conditions weren't met. You know, we need to fix it. And, and-
Have a reasonable belief that everybody is being treated fairly and in a consistent manner. I mean, that's not-
Yeah, it's got to be straight across the board, everyone does the same process. And if you do that, you, you won't have all the complaints. You know, you won't have these issues where, where people complaining, but, you know, I hear all the time around the town, you know, what good are the permits that, that you give out? Because no one's going to pay attention to them anyways.
So, it would be, it would be nice if, if we could leave this meeting by just agreeing that, you know, Rod's office would routinely check municity for every, you know, with every permit. I mean, I think that'd be a simple solution, a simple thing that could be accomplished.
Julian, you were going to chime in?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we want the process to continue to improve. And so I would just say, let us take a look at that municity and potentially related processes and see what we're able to do within our resources to continue to fine tune and, and enhance and improve. So, yeah, we're, we have challenges and we want to continue to improve them. So, issues you've raised have been most helpful and Rod's comments have been extremely helpful and Noreen's as well. And let us do some exploration there and see what we can do. One thing that I do have to suggest to the board is that if, for instance, and I know that's, this isn't the circumstance necessarily that we've been stressing, but, but i- in those instances where concerns come to members of the zoning board of appeals, I would ask as, as town manager, if, if you could funnel those questions or concerns or enforcement issues to Noreen as a zoning administrator. Zoning can, Noreen then could sort them so that we're not getting duplications and, and transmit them to me. And I can ask Rod to explore and report back on those. We can return the information to Noreen and get, get them back to you that way. So that we have a process thereby where the members of the zoning board of appeals, working with Noreen and, and myself and Rod, we can have a feedback loop and, and give you some information on that. That's in addition to the kind of fine tuning that, you know, we're always happy to take a look at and see what we can do as far as continuing to improve.
Appreciate it, Julian.
Is it possible to do this again periodically so we could stay, all of us stay on the same page? I'm not saying every week or bimonthly or whatever, but so we could follow up on everyone's progress, including ours? Maybe six months from now? Yeah, I mean, something.
I think keeping the lines of communication open is definitely-
I think it's a fine idea for myself. I have, I have no objection to meeting again in six months and talking about what, what we may or may not be doing differently to help improve the application process. I might also add that it might be worth considering articulating to the applicant how extremely important it is for them to adhere to the special permit and each and every condition and any change, any modification, no matter how minor, be brought back to the board. I think the, I think it starts there. I think it's extremely important for the applicant to understand that there shall be no modifications without your, without your acknowledgement, without your approval. And I think what happens, quite honestly, is people are so excited to see the board grant them their permit, that they sometimes forget about these conditions. And not everybody understands that they are conditions. Some people think that they are recommendations. So, I think it starts there. I think it starts with articulating to the applicant how important it is and what the process is for making a minor change, that it requires a revision. So I think it starts there as well. And I think if we can improve upon the understanding of the applicant, I think that ultimately will make it better for everybody as well.
You know, I think just to sort of piggyback on that, I think a lot of the applicants are either represented by somebody or they're not really part of the actual building process. It's, you know, beyond, I think, most people's understanding. But I think for the parties that are actually applying for permits and following through on that, it's really those parties that the conditions are contingent upon.
Well, that's why we ask those questions during the meetings, Noreen, right? To get it in the record, so it's part of the record. And at the end of the record, on every one of the, when we read it, it is they have to come back before us, no matter how small the change is, in every one of them. So-
Right, but I just think that-
Representatives should be reading that. In many cases, we've granted relief or made statements to the, to the effect of, we know it's not the, the homeowner's fault, that the builder or the applicant should have, the applicant's representative should have known better in many cases. And we've made that on the record, Rod, before. Not, not all the time, but sometimes.
No, I understand that, I understand that.
We do try to express the importance of following the permit by the letter of its existence. It's the builders that need to be, that need to know, that need to be careful.
Well, I, I think that's, that's something to stress. So even in our, even in our process of our permits, in most cases, there is a builder representative there. You know, in many cases, because you only have so many builders in one town, you'll get multiple builders and multiple applications. I don't think it's a situation that they don't know they have to come with the board. I think at this point, you're having people that are taking advantage of the loopholes. They already understand that-
We have easier time with homeowners that come in and-
Much easier.
To get their, their, their application, I mean, their, their permit, and they follow it by the letter and even exceed it because they're so happy. We have an easier time with those people than we do with people that should know better.
Because it seems like they're taking advantage of, they know we can get this answer from this department, this answer from this one and this to the other. And none of those three departments are going to know that they're different answers. And eventually, we'll get an occupancy permit, and then what are they going to do? And, and, you know, building permits is one thing. The occupancy permit is what has your teeth. You know, they can push, they can do the building all they want, it's the occupancy permit. So I, I'm even more, I would be more concerned that everything is met, that nothing goes out in occupancy permit on those permits unless all the items are being met. The moment you give an occupancy permit, you've lost any kind of pull that you have whatsoever. They know at that point you have to deal with courts, they know town's not going to want to deal with courts. A butters, you know, one of the biggest issues we have with the butters is, what's the first thing that they say? I would love to put in a complaint, I do not have the money to hire someone. They're not going to go through a legal process in most cases, so they're betting on that. So if you can, if you can, if you can on that occupancy permit, make sure that, you know, double and triple check that it's done. And hon- honestly, if, if you are swamped and you want to make sure this stuff is done, I mean, it has to come back to the administrator anyways. It's easier enough for the office to check that the items were completed and to say, now it's all set, you can do the occupancy permit. But, you know, Noreen, how many situations, I mean, multiple situations have come up where occupancy permits were given and we can't do anything at that point, we're stuck.
And Rod, through no fault of yours, on many-
It just, it happens.
That they, they, they jumped through that loophole and the horse is out of the barn. You know, you're the only one that has the leverage to put an end to that kind of behavior. We don't have that leverage.
Understand.
We identify it for you. But unfortunately, you're the only one can make them understand by maybe denying an occupancy permit or building permit for this to affect some kind of change. We can threaten, we have no authority to enforce. We can argue by making it more clear and succinct and, and the conditions. And that's, that would be our responsibility to you.
A lot of these special permits don't require use or occupancy permits because they're alterations, they're additions, they're expansions. Use and occupancy is not issued, it's typically a final. If I, if I could, Scott, I just want to comment on something you had said a moment ago in, in the breakdown, sometimes between the homeowner. You had mentioned that sometimes it's an easier process with the homeowner. But quite often, homeowners, after receiving a special permit, will hire a contractor. And I couldn't tell you how many times I've had conversations with contractors applying for permits, not even knowing there was a special permit. So sometimes, the, the communication might be great between your board and the homeowner, but then there's a breakdown between the homeowner and the contractor. So, you know, I, I understand.
Point taken, listen, point taken. I'm just saying, as far as hearing process and them saying, yes, 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 we have an easier time that, and with that respect, we still don't know whether any deficiencies in what we have required are, are being adhered to because, again, we are not the enforcement agent. Well, well, the point you just made, Rod, that, that, that really puts the ball back in your court. You're the one that needs to make sure that contractor realizes there's, there's conditions.
Rod, while, while we're on the, sorry, Rod, didn't mean to step on you there.
We will continue to try to improve upon our recognizing deficiencies where there's special permits. And, you know, I, I understand your concern. I, I respect and appreciate all of your comments tonight. And I will do my best to try to improve upon the process.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Rod. While we're on the subject of enforcement, I do want to get going on the agenda. But, you know, we, we all acknowledge it's a complaint-driven system. And, and you said that you do require complaints in writing and signed by, you know, by someone who is complaining about something. But what, what about your process responding back to the complaint? And let's say, let's say it, it does have some substance to it and you do have to investigate it to a certain degree. Do you respond back to the person who complained in writing?
Yes, we do. So, we not only respond to that complainant at the end, but from the infancy of the complaint through the process, as I had said earlier, some of these complaints take a year to resolve. We keep the complainant in the loop every step of the way. We, if, if there's any communication between our department and the, the possible violation, the property at the, the violation, the owner of the property, if there's any communication, I instruct Jonathan Dickinson, who typically follows up on these complaints, to keep that complainant in the loop. So they know that we're continuing to work upon it. Even if there's been no resolution, we contact them to let them know so far, there's no resolution, and we let them know where we are. So, they understand. And they are, for the most part, grateful, even if there's no resolution, that we continue to keep the lines of communication open with them. So they're always in the loop.
Sure, and I, I certainly understand that not everything ends up in Superior Court. Now, some of my cases don't even get there. But at least from, from the complaint process, upon receipt of a complaint at the building commissioner's office, or do you, do you write something confirming receipt? To, to the complainant?
So when, I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question, but when the complaint is received, we typically contact the complainant and have a conversation with them. Because within their complaint, the narrative is not always thorough. So, we usually contact them to make sure we have a clear understanding of what the complaint is. And then we let that person know, if the complaint does have merit. Once we do begin to investigate, we keep that person in the loop along the way.
Understood. All right, anything else on enforcement?
If I just make a quick comment on that. So, so just through my business in general, I do have to go through mun- municity on the public side. And there is a public side and a private side. I've come across places where complaints have gone in. And something very helpful is, it seems they've always notated it. In the public side of the system, a complaint was received, you can usually see some kind of a readout. I just had a quick question on that. I, I, I've noticed that when enforcement agencies, different agents have changed, the prior agent comments seem to disappear out of the public side of the system. Are those still kept in the private side of the system? I don't know, I'm not sure, Bob. I would have to look at it. Not, I'm not familiar with what you're speaking of, I'd have to look at it. Are you, are you asking me if, if we're, if these, if the communication is, is deleted? Well, yeah, I've seen cases where you've had a prior agent that might have notated, you know, complaint, yes or no, was it valid or what the contacts were? And then, once that agent is no longer with the town, and I may have come across that property again, it's gone. Currently, if I went into a property right now, and let's say Jonathan was reviewing something, I would actually, there would be a notation there, and it would say Jonathan, he's got his name, and it gives all, you know, what his process is, which is great, because it keeps a trail. I just didn't know if that was a personnel issue, that if somebody leaves, they take that off of the public system, but it stays in the private system? Or is that just an era where somehow? Yeah, it, you know, it mi- it might have been an era, I don't know. But Jonathan understands that nothing shall ever be deleted. You know, we have record of every complaint within municity as well as a hard copy file. None of them are ever to be deleted. So, you know, I, I don't know what happened in the past, Bob, but nothing is- Well, again, it might be, again, on the public side, I know there's two sides to the system. So, maybe it's the public side that doesn't get the info, because there's a lot of stuff on the public side you can't get. I can't pull up a special permit, I can't pull up those, but I can pull up all the building permits, the complaints, the years, the sign offs. That's something I'd have to look at, I'm not sure.
James, I think you were motioning you had something?
I was, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Palmer, I know earlier tonight you talked about due process rights, and I, I absolutely agree with you that homeowners have due process rights, and your authority essentially stops at the door once a cer- certificate of occupancy has been issued. But hypothetically, if you get a, or have you had occasion where you've received a complaint about something truly egregious going on, or a very significant deviation of, of a special permit, have you had occasion as the building official to obtain an administrative warrant to get into, confirm or deny it after you receive a written complaint?
So administrative warrants are not easily handed out by judges. I, I've never been involved in a situation where I've requested an administrative warrant. They're very challenging and difficult to achieve. But I've never had a situation where I've had to consider an administrative warrant.
Thank you.
It's very challenging to achieve to get a, an administrative warrant without, without merit.
Anything else, James?
establishes merit.
Go ahead, Scott, sorry.
I'm sorry, who establishes merit?
A judge.
So it's never happened before, that was-
I've never, I have requested, I have, I have twice requested administrative warrants that were denied.
Thank you.
That's, that's, that's not here in Falmouth, but that's my, my experience. Here in Falmouth, I've never, I've never had anything get to that point where an administrative warrant has been exercised.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
All right, anything else on enforcement before we go along with the agenda? Mary?
Yeah, just, just curious. What were the cases that you had where you tried to get one? If you'd just briefly tell us what, what it was, the situation that you thought warranted it?
There was a, it was probably twelve years ago, there was a property that I believed was converted from a single family to a two-family. And I had requested, and I was told that it wasn't. I believe that it had been. And I had tried to achieve an administrative warrant. And town council in the town that I was in said that it would not be granted based on, on the evidence that I had, that a judge would not grant an administrative warrant and that. So we didn't go any further. It was his opinion that it would not be granted for-
But not a judge's-
That I had. And so- That I had. And so, but that's probably a better question for town council than myself. I don't know why that particular attorney decided that it wasn't, it did not have, did not warrant an administrative warrant or search warrant.
All right. Anything else for enforcement? Okay, moving along, what we have next. So ZBA sign off on building permits for all the properties reviewed. So again, I guess this is just getting into the post permitting process. There, there seems to be a disconnect again, and I know we're, we're kind of touching upon everything with, with everything that we're bringing up, but there seems to be a disconnect after the public hearing process, after the applicant has received their special permit. But then they go ahead and they got their, or they get their building permit and now it's time for final sign off before the occupancy permit is issued. So we've been hitting on it tonight, you know, with our discussion on enforcement and things like that.
But I think TJ, we talked about that a little while ago when you had asked me the process and I explained how the application typically goes upstairs for zoning sign off. The, the application is, you know, not, the permit is typically not issued with a special permit unless there's a sign off from Noreen verifying that the permits we have are the plans that you have. And in some cases, they're not. So Noreen, if there's a, if there's a change in the plan or the plans have a date that's not reflective of your plans, Noreen always picks up on that. And if I could, I just want to comment on a while ago, Ken Forman had asked me if, if all zoning applications and special permits and variances were in munity and I had said no. And I apologized to Noreen. I was thinking of another, another department that doesn't typically always have everything in munity, but everything that, that I'm aware of that has a special permit of variance is in munity. So sorry about that, Noreen.
Rod, have you ever run into any cases where applicants or builders have proceeded at their own risk within the 20-day appeal period and then you found some irregularities after that fact, like the horse was out of the barn, for lack of a better term?
I've never had, I don't know that I've ever been involved in a special permit where somebody has started the project before the appeal period. I wouldn't have issued the permit.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Scott. Anything else on this topic?
I guess a just quick question to administrator. Didn't we have one that they did that? Or a couple?
An administrative warrant?
No, where the builder or the developer decided to start the project prior to the appeal period being over?
Not that I'm aware of.
So I think that's not typically the case. I think what builders are allowed to do, however, is that if the zoning board issues a special permit, for example, and if it is appealed by a neighbor, the builder is allowed to proceed, but it's at risk. But I think as far as building prior to the appeal, the initial 20-day appeal period, I don't know how somebody could get a permit that fast because building department shouldn't be issuing a building permit until they have a decision from us.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean they can't start excavation and clearing and start a project without a permit. I mean, they do it all the time.
Yeah, except that you know.
All they need a permit for is footings and then, and then it goes from there. They can do everything prior to that. My question was, has anybody ever started a project prior, during a 20-day appeal period?
So I can answer that, Scott, by saying they've not gotten a building permit. That, that doesn't mean they didn't go in and cut the trees and stump and, and begin their excavation.
And dig holes, right. Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anything else?
Just a minor question. Mr. Watts here. We started putting a condition in bringing up dry wells that they actually be inspected while open because we've had cases where they've just stuck a pipe in the ground. Is that something that the, that your office would do the inspection on? Is that something we have to have engineering look at?
That's another challenging one, Bob. You know, if typically it's been, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been my experience that when you have these conditions, that it'd be something that engineering look at or their engineer provide documentation on. You know, is there a specific design to a dry well or an area well for roof runoff? I guess it would, I guess it would determine, it would be determined by the size of the roof. So I'm assuming that there's some engineering formula for the size of that dry well in relation to the size of the roof.
Well, I guess the, so I guess the issue we're getting in isn't the size of the dry well, is that it's on the plans?
Yeah.
But they don't actually put it in. They put the pipe in the ground, but they don't put it in. So because we've had situations like that, we're actually writing in now that the dry well be inspected while open because of situations where it's just been, you know, covered over and nothing's there. And we are putting them in the permit. So I, I was just a, it was just a formality question. If we put them in the permits, is that something that the, one of your inspectors has to do or do we actually have to designate engineering to go do it?
I would be, I would be more confident because I don't know what the formula is for the size of the well in relation to the roof. I, I think it might make better sense for your condition to articulate that a dry well be installed and certified by the site engineer.
Okay. A lot of times it's on the cut sheet, Rod. And so it wouldn't be that hard to do. And you could also, Rob, Bob, Mr. Dugan, you could also do video evidence of the, you know, the
Yeah, that would be fine, just so that we have something there.
I've seen that done before too.
It's just a new condition and I didn't know actually who handled it or not. I just know we were trying to stop the situation where it says it's there and then now we have drainage issues because it actually never was installed.
I can't imagine anybody wanting to do that to themselves. Although it's happened, right?
True.
I know.
All right. Anything else on this topic?
What's there?
All right. Moving right along. Procedure for ZBA, let's see. Yep. Procedure for the board to request enforcement. So we've, we've already been hitting on this. Anything new to be brought up? All right. Everyone's good with that? Okay. The assessor to review the construction prior to final building sign off. So the board has been getting into this that we've been requesting the assessors for, to go in for a walkthrough, essentially to confirm the details of the new construction. And I knew Trish Favuley sent out a memo in November just confirming for all, all departments, all boards that assessor's info is strictly for assessing taxing purposes only. But we've been getting into that where we're requesting the assessors to do a walkthrough just to allow for an accurate accounting of assessing, you know, to really contribute to the tax base for the town. I know this is a new condition we've been working on. It's been, we've been probably been asking it for a year. But I believe there have been circumstances where the CEO has been issued prior to assessors walk through. And we've already mentioned, once, once the CEO has been issued, you really can't get in the house and I don't think any judge in his right mind is going to grant a search warrant for, for the assessors department to walk in there and take a look for taxing purposes. Maybe for the board of health, maybe for something else, but definitely not for taxes. Noreen, do you have anything else on this?
No, I mean, it's just been a conversation with Rod and Tricia and myself because as you mentioned, you have been putting it in as a condition since I think April of last year. And I think, you know, it's perhaps frustrating for assessing because they want to make sure that whatever changes people are making, they're accurately capturing that for, you know, assessing purposes. And, you know, we were putting it in as a condition, but of course zoning does not do any enforcement, so.
Yeah, that's a challenging, that's a challenging one as well. I know there has, there had been some, there has been some recommendations that on our final inspection at the property that we have somebody from the board or from the assessors department accompany us on that final inspection. Certainly I'm not opposed to the condition or the assessors going in the house, but I think it should be independent of the building inspector. I don't know that it would be a comfortable situation in having a building official go to somebody's front door and introduce themselves to do a final inspection and also introduce somebody from the board of assessors to go through the house for assessing purposes. So I think, you know, it should be something that's completely independent of the final inspection by the building department.
But of course, but before the, before the CEOs issued.
Excuse me?
I'm, I'm speaking to the chairman. How would that work legality wise? Would, would the assessor have the wherewithal to be able to go in and, and identify things that are supposed to be there and not? Would there have to be a certified official that does that to accompany that? I mean, would that create a disconnect by that not taking place together?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure myself, Scott. But I know Julian, you you were going to offer a comment. I don't know if you can.
I'm sorry, Julian.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, I think that it would behoove us to have town council involved in that discussion. My, my general understanding is that assessment process is independent of this, of the building process and not interconnected. And I think that the statute does not provide coverage for that. It might be preferred in some circumstances, but I appreciate Rod's comment that at best that would create a difficult atmosphere for a final inspection for a building inspector to have a third party there walking through for a different purpose.
I think that's mostly, from our point of view, mostly goes to the issue of how many bedrooms, right? Is that, yeah, I mean.
And I think too, the way the zoning board of appeals decision is written is just that the assessor be invited. And now certainly the homeowner, I think if there was, you know, if the final sign off was being withheld prior to them inviting the assessor out. So that could be, you know, at their leisure. But I think the intent was to sort of require the homeowner to allow that to happen. And I think also where you put it as a condition in the decision, and if the decision is not appealed, then it's understood that they're accepting that condition. So I guess it would be worthwhile checking with town council to see if we can continue that as a condition, but you know, in the meanwhile, we, we've had that in there, but the assessor, you know, if the homeowners don't have to invite the assessor, I guess they just wouldn't.
No, Noreen, why, if, if the building department goes in and does their final inspection and they have, they have the certification right there, why, forgive me, I must have missed something. Why, why isn't that good enough to give to the assessor? Why do they have to go in? If we've already got an, if we've already got a sign off by the building, I'm sorry, I must have missed something. I know we're requesting it, but is it, why are we requesting it again? Can you be more specific?
Well, so I think the understanding that I had with the assessor was that, you know, depending on the amount of work that's being done, and now it's certainly one thing if, you know, somebody's casing an opening for a bedroom in the house and then they're putting a bedroom in above the garage. But, you know, typically the intent here was that the assessor, you know, that people are doing substantial work. For example, the detached garage with the habitable space above. And, you know, certainly if they can't get in and inspect, they can't properly assess it, I guess.
I understand. There's a timing issue between the issuance of the, of the, the occupancy permit or the sign off on the permit and what they may do after the fact. Is that what we're saying?
No, I think just the, the assurers wanted to get in and the thought was that if, if the property owner knew that a CEO wasn't going to issue until they invited the assessor.
Oh, all right, I get it.
Perhaps be eager to.
The building department say so wasn't good enough for assessing.
I, I think where it comes from is that once the project is completed and the CEO is given, the assessors department sends out a form letter to the property saying that they would like to view the property. And at that point, they don't view the property because the owner's never going to let them in. If it's new construction and it's something easy to do when it's being built, just to notate what was done on the, you know, on the addition of the renovation, they can do it at that time. No one's living in there. It's easy to do and then get it over with and just keep all their records updated. We get a lot of situations where we see copies of the assessors records and we don't go by them, but a lot of times the assessors records does notate a completely different layout again than what we thought the actual plan was going to be. And sometimes the plans that were submitted with other departments. So it's.
My question, how do we get to that point? How does it get, if they do a final inspection at building, how do you get to that point? Where it's totally different?
I think we're seeing the same thing, Scott, right now where we have plans submitted with our applications that are different than the plans that are being approved by the building department. The building department is making sure that the plan that they've been applied for is done correctly. But in many cases, it is different than what we have allowed. And again, we find out after the fact. And once it's after the fact, you're, you're stuck.
Or it's never updated.
What's our recourse after that?
After the occupancy, it's very tough. If you get it in advance and they look at what it is, it's, everything is easier prior to the occupancy. I, I mean, I would actually say once the occupancy is done, you know, forget the project. I mean, I mean, good luck trying to get anything done once the occupancy is done. Before it, most homeowners are very agreeable to let you inspector do things because they know they're going to have to have the sign off.
I understand.
They want to make sure it's done correctly. So it's easier to get them in then. And again, maybe we do have to check with town council to see what would the legality of scheduling. But if it is at all possible for them to see it prior to, it would probably be easier for the department.
All right. Thank you, Bob, for that. Anything else on this topic? All right. Last one. ZBA to receive requested or required documents prior to final sign off on construction, including height certs or as-built. I know it's, it's been board practice whenever we're requiring a height certification or is, or an as-built. That is us as a board through conditions signaling that, you know, there's, there's a serious issue either with the height, you're up against that 35 foot mark or with the as-belts, maybe you're dealing with a side yard setback or something that it, you know, needs to be preserved, definitely not encroached upon. You know, there's been circumstances where we don't get that requested, or I should really say required documentation for our files. And that way we, we just don't know, there's no way to confirm exactly what was built. Because you're basically looking at a de facto variance at that point, which we're certainly not, we don't want to be in the business of providing.
So, so TJ, every, every, every foundation, whether it be a single family home or an addition, we receive an as-built for verification of as, of setbacks and they're all in munity.
And each and every application?
Every, every as-built is in munity. You can view them on munity.
All right. How about the height cert?
So if there's a height cert, if there's a condition for an applicant to provide the ZBA or the building department with a height cert, I think again, I go back to the communication with the applicant that they completely understand the importance of that. We do our best to recognize those and when there's a condition, we typically put it on the building permit application. Again, it's a highlighted condition on the building plans. So I'm not saying that there haven't been some that have slipped through the crack, but we do our best to. to, to require them.
Rod, is that checked on the frame inspection, the initial framing? Do they check heights?
So, so typically, Scott, and, and, you know, that's a good question, because that's where you want to recognize the height. After that, after that, it's pretty hard to, to correct the problem.
Right. And I know there are laser devices now that you can check distance with, that wouldn't require them to go out there with tapes and two people.
But we typically only, we typically only.
A lot shorter.
We, we only accept height certifications from a land surveyor. It has to be a registered land surveyor. So we, we don't recognize a letter from a builder or a framer or a carpenter. It has to be a land surveyor.
Or your own measurement.
No, I don't, I won't go out and measure it.
Okay.
It has to be a land surveyor, because they have to recognize where to measure from, and that would be the average.
Establish mean grade and everything.
Exactly.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Any, anything else on this topic?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, to the administrator, so I know that you brought this up before, Noreen, that you've had issues with this, you know, not receiving the height certs or the as-built, so you know, what's your experience been?
So, you know, we, we have requested them, and as Rod pointed out, you know, certainly when you have somebody who's proposing to build to the height max, you know, the concern is that they not go over, and certainly catching that at framing is the critical time. But to date, certifications that we've requested to ensure, or, you know, lot coverage is another one, where if you're going up to the maximum, and, you know, so we've not received certifications about those. I guess the other piece of that is that, you know, if we do get certification from somebody and if they are over, there's not an action that the board can take. But, you know, we do, we have requested it for the record.
Have we ever requested it at the time of the frame?
Yes, so. Yeah, so if, if somebody's proposing to build their new house to 35 feet, we have requested a height cert at framing so that it's not the case that they finish the house and then find out that they've exceeded the height.
But have you been, have you been given a height cert at framing? Because it, it appears that even though that's the request that's come in, they wait till it's built, then we show that it's too high and there's nothing we can do.
But have we ever asked for it at the, at the time of permit, is what I.
Yes.
Yes.
So, so I would suggest those that you haven't received, you check municity. Because when we do receive them, we, we scan them and put them in municity.
So then you give the framing inspection, that's checked against the framing inspection before they're allowed to go ahead, or is that not?
So, so typically, typically, the, the, the understanding is that there'd be a land surveyor go out, the, the land survey will create a letter, a document, that it is not 35 feet. They typically give us the exact number. And then we will typically go out and do the framing inspection. That's the objective.
Understood. Thank you.
So for those that Noreen has not received, I would suggest you check municity to see if they're there.
So, so even though they're in municity, how would we know when it's ready for the frame? Is there a, is there a notification? You know, I guess, I guess I go back to the same thing. If, if on the building application is a checklist of what the conditions are, and now someone goes to check the frame, and now they look on the checklist and say that there's supposed to be a height certed frame, at that point, they could check off and say that we have to, you know, contact the ZBA office to make sure they have a copy of the height cert at the frame.
Typically, if, how it works, Bob, is if, if there's a condition on the special permit that there be a height cert, we typically will have that condition written in bold print on the building permit card. So the applicant knows, and then we typically put that condition on the building permit application within municity. So when we receive, and we receive over 100 calls every day for inspections, when that clerk goes to the computer to enter that framing inspection, we ask that they review any conditions that may be applicable to the special permit. And usually what will happen is that condition that there'd be a height cert be on the building permit application, be on her screen. And the intent, or what we try to do is make sure that contractor has a height cert before we will schedule their frame inspection. So if it's on there, we, we ask for the height cert before we'll do the frame inspection.
Well, it seems a simple matter to also then just notify the ZBA office that, you know, it's being done, because I think that you're, you're, I'm sure you're correct. It's in municity. However, the, sometimes, you know, they have two years to execute the, the permits, so how do we know when to be checking?
Well, again, the, the idea is, and the condition typically states that there'd be a height cert at the frame inspection. So, you know, we, we try to make sure that that condition is known to everybody, and the only way to do that is to put it on the building permit card.
No, that's fine. I'm just saying, once it's done, would be nice for the zoning office to know it was done and that they complied. It just would be, just be nice.
Without, without knowing that it's done, there's no way to know when you should check municity. If, if, if they're already checking to make sure the height cert was done, and they're already checking that it's a condition, and you've got an office within 50 feet, I mean, in a telephone, I just don't see where the problem is of, of just, or an email or text notifying that the height cert now, has now come in for that project. And that way, it's off your hands too, because on that way, you've met, you've met the terms that the zoning administrator has to look on it, because, you know, again, there have been multiple projects where it hasn't been done, it hasn't been noticed, and they now exist at a height that doesn't comply with the permit. We've seen the same thing on lot coverage. We've seen the same thing on setbacks. You know, when I got on the board, I thought when you do these conditions, it's, it's, it's pretty, you know, self-explanatory. You know, one, two, three, four, five, somebody's just checking them off. And if something doesn't comply, they contact the applicant and say, now we have to fix it. What appears to be happening is that everything's written up, and then it just sits all over the place, and this person has no idea that this has happened over here. And now you've missed specific things that are in a, I will say again, it's a recorded document. This isn't just a license. This is recorded with the registry, with the deed. When you get an error on the deed, when you have a deed and you're doing a title search and it says this project can't go over 35 feet, and that's what you assume, and then three property owners later, you find out, well, guess what? It's 37 feet. But that's okay anyways, even though the permit that's recorded with the property says you now have a title issue. It doesn't, because they never really checked it off, and there's no way to really go back. If you can stop all these where it starts and you know that it's been framed, we've checked it off, we just caught, make one quick contact and let the, the office know. You know, and I know, Rod, your, your department is under a lot of strain with work. You know, when I was dealing with stuff with the accessory apartments, that's why I thought that it would be easier in, instead of giving you more work, keeping the annual affidavits to be checked, that they just leave it in the zoning office, because they used to check those automatically anyways. You know, on these accessory apartments, I don't know how many we permitted so far, how many of those people have actually filed the annual affidavit that has to be checked every single year? Are they filing those? Or, because, you know, you don't have enough people to check everything. So my guess is that there's no one that's checking those, which is now part of a new bylaw that's gone through town meeting. And that's another thing, you know, you know, to the town manager, that process is not going to work, making the building department do another step. Because whoever's doing these accessory apartments legally has to contact all those apartments. Anything that isn't annually submitted as an affidavit. And if they don't have an annual affidavit, they're not supposed to use them. And I, and I, you'd probably have to do something again with the warrant, but it worked fine when it was in the ZBA before. They would just, you know, once a year, check everyone and, you know, send out a form letter or, or base it off. But that's also going to be a problem, because we're going to start seeing again more of these apartments. And the moment somebody says, wait a second, there's no affidavit, I, again, the town, I think that's on the town. I don't think it's on the applicant. I don't think it's on the butter. I think it's on the town. And again, Rod, I didn't think it was fair them giving you that as something actually you had to do. But I think that's going to be a problem too, again, with these accessory apartments permits. So somebody should make sure that these annual affidavits are being submitted, and if any of the properties aren't submitting them, they can't use them until they resubmit them again.
Well, if I could just go back to your original, your original comment about sharing the information with Noreen, the height certs. And you had said, you know, you could phone call, fax, whatever it might be. What we could do is we could, we could stamp it received as we typically do, make a photocopy and put a copy in Noreen's mailbox. Okay?
Simple as that.
That works.
Yeah, that's great. It's easy.
Mary?
Yeah, I just have a general question, which is how does somebody who's in the public, a resident, a homeowner, how do they know if a building permit has been issued or has even been applied for? And I, I only ask it because if it, if it could be put somewhere on the website for the town, for example, I think that would be a wonderful thing for people to look up. Maybe it's inappropriate there, I don't know, but just the idea that if you live here, you know that your neighbor, for, for example, might have put in for a building permit.
Well, that information is there, and Bob can show you how to get to it.
Well, if it's in municipi, you know, most of the people, and when we have these meetings, when the public come, first of all, they're very scared, and second of all, they don't know all of this. It's very much confusing to them. It's, it makes them nervous. And I just think it would be, if it's possible, just to download whatever's in municipi, municipality, whatever the thing is, and show every month or whatever what you're, you're, what kinds of work you're doing and what has been issued. I think it would go a long way to inform the public about what's going on. I mean, I don't, I don't think that's protected by privacy or anything.
These permits are supposed to be posted in a visible spot, right?
Right.
If there's construction underway.
But you also now have, I mean, in the old days, and, and you used to have a big B, and at least you could see that, or you could see that people were doing construction and they didn't have a big B on the, on it, and you could call. But now there are supposedly boxes and everything. I don't think that people know that now there are boxes.
So the, the, the building permit does have to be posted in a conspicuous spot. So it's visible from the street. But, you know, in the real world, when work is being done on a home, sometimes it's taken off the window by the painter to paint the window, and it's left on the floor and never put back up. So it is required, and most of the permits that I issue, quite honestly, are visible from the street. I think most contractors and most homeowners do a great job in posting them, so they're visible. There is an occasion where it might fall off the window, or, you know, some people put them outside and they get destroyed by the weather. But the, the boxes that you refer to are typically boxes that are put outside that have plans inside them, so they're protected from the weather. I think that's what you meant by boxes, but I think in general, most people do a good job in posting their permit out.
Well, I must tell you, when I drive around town or walk around town, I see a lot of construction going on and there's no Bs in the window. I'm telling you. And, you know, even if there's a B in the window, people don't know what the construction is.
Well, you can see that information. It's online.
I know that, but that's not something that people, I must admit to you, I don't think I've ever been on municipality. I haven't been in that database. How many people here have? How many people on the ZBA? Raise your hand if you've been in it. So you can see there are people who haven't.
But to your point, Mary, if you do go in it on the pub, again, you can only access the public side, and it is confusing because each address is in twice. So it's not as easy as just click on this, click on that. You've got to go through lists. You can't go back. It, it is a little more complicated. You know, your comment about the no posting, I've been on reviews of sites where there are no documentation, the dock boxes are empty, there's no building plans, and I asked the contractor if I was even at the right house and gave the applicant's name, and they couldn't even find anyone. They had to, you know, make three or four calls just to find out if it was in the right, right spot. So I know it is required, and, you know, you can't be policing everybody all day. But again, I think there's just a lot of people taking advantage of the process because they know that they're not held to anything.
And even in your comments, and I hate to say this, but even in your comments, it's like, well, sometimes they fall down, sometimes the painter, I mean, we built a house and we made sure that was in the window at all times, because that was the rule. And so you have people that are doing everything by the rules. And then they see that other people are not. And I think that creates a lot of angst in a community. And I just throw that out as a thing to think about.
So Mary, if somebody has a question or a concern about a project, a neighbor perhaps, they can call the building department, and we will be more than happy to look up the project and explain to them exactly what their neighbor's doing. We, we do it every day.
I know, but I also hear you saying how much work you have. And, and first of all, there.
I don't usually say that. I don't.
Yes, you have. You've said it repeatedly. And all I'm saying is if you post it on the website and educate the population that if they're there, then they can look there, and they don't have to bother you, because most people think you're very busy and your people are busy, and they're not willing to call. And those are the people that generally follow the rules themselves.
Well, we're never too busy to answer a call and.
Well, I'll be calling you tomorrow.
All right, you call me.
Thank you, Mary. All right. Anything else?
Is that the last?
Just saying, I, I just went to town hall and signed on to municity so I could raise my hand.
There you go, Ken.
I have one procedural question for Mr. Suso, if I may.
Go ahead, Scott.
In, in the scope of running the town, has there ever, or is it permissible for the manager's office or representative for the manager's office to instruct the building commissioner to, to do something in, in opposition or out of sequence to a permit? Is that legal, or is it, has that ever been done, or in extreme circumstances, is that permissible?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Have, have I ever asked the?
No, I'm just saying, as, as a rule, is it permissible in an extreme situation for you to be able to go, or someone in your office to go to and, and circumvent a, a procedure for the sake of safety, say, or whatever? I, I'm just saying, to keep the permit in line, is there anything outside of our permit that someone can, can circumvent the system in a case of extreme necessity?
I, I, I have a difficult time answering such a hypothetical, but I, I can't recall anything like, that sounds like what you're describing that's come up in my career.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Scott. So I know, I know part of the problem was that we had to speak in generalities tonight and hypotheticals, but I, I understand that, and I, I think overall, we did a good job. We covered a lot of ground, and what were we talking about? A nine-month review on how everything's going on?
Six, I think we said.
Six, nine, six, six. Mary, six? All right. Great. All right. So that takes us to, is it September? We don't need to set a concrete date right now, but we can, we can agree on, uh, circling back in September.
Sure.
All right. Great. Uh, Julian and Rod, thank you very much for, for your time tonight. I know, uh, took a few hours off of your day, but we, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Pleasure to join you. Thanks for the thoughtful, uh, comments and the, uh, candid remarks. It's appreciated and we're happy to to be with you and listen. And as we mentioned, as Rod stated, we want to continue to improve things.
We appreciate your time.
Thanks again.
Thank you for all your service as well.
Thank you.
Well, time for the bar.
Thank you.
Noreen.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.
You know.